Excellent, so we're back. Item thirteen is approval of a new ten-year franchise agreement with Recology Cupertino related to recycling, organics, and solid waste collection, processing, and disposal, effective February first, two thousand twenty-one, and so forth, as listed in the agenda. May we please have the staff report for this item?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Members of Council, Roger Lee, Director of Public Works. Something a little bit different for you now. This item, for your consideration, is the authorization of a ten-year franchise agreement. Solid Waste Services, which are the familiar carts and bins at homes and businesses, are currently serviced by Recology South Bay under a franchise agreement that expires at the end of January two thousand twenty-one. For this presentation, Recology South Bay will be abbreviated as Recology. Leading up to this evening, and in part due to good services and value provided by Recology's customers over many years, City Council, on April twenty-first of this year, authorized staff to conduct negotiations only with Recology for the new franchise agreement. Negotiations have concluded, and Environmental Program's manager, Ursula Sorova, will make this presentation and will cover the services and rates proposed. Ursula is supported by our knowledgeable consultant, HF and H President, Rob Hilton, as well as Deborah Miller from the City Attorney's Office. Also attendance is Recology General Manager, John Sorelli, and several of his key personnel. So Ursula, please begin.
So sorry, Roger, you're kind of blipping in and out. And so I'll let you know if your volume vacillates as well. But I take it that someone is presenting the slideshow here?
Yeah. Hopefully, you're able to hear what I was saying about Ursula. Why don't you go ahead and get started?
That is much better, Roger, thanks.
Can you see our slide?
Yes, we can, we can see this.
Okay. I was having a panicky tech trouble minute there for a second, so. Okay, let's see. All right, so, good evening, Mayor Paul, Council members. As Roger said, there are several recommended items before you tonight, namely, the first two are authorizing execution of the proposed new franchise agreement and adopting the maximum rate schedule for year one and the percentage increases for years two and three. As a quick note here, while the rates before you tonight are limited to years one through three of the new agreement, we want to emphasize that during year three, there will be a cost-based analysis to inform the rates for year four. Any increase would be limited to five percent of operating expenses, and the results of the analysis would be presented to council at that time. Meanwhile, in late two thousand twenty-one, we will begin an RFP process for a new agreement for processing and disposition of garbage and mixed construction and demolition materials, which will also inform year four. Next, we request use of the Resource Recovery Enterprise Fund to smooth rates. This fund has been in place for over twenty years and has accrued a balance of about five-point-three million, which can only be used for the benefit of ratepayers. The proposed rates you will be seeing include the use of this fund to smooth increases for the first three rate years. The rate year goes from February through January. Use of the fund is needed and recommended beyond the third rate year, but that decision will come before council for consideration before year four. So we are recommending that council authorize use of the Resource Recovery Enterprise Fund for rate smoothing, create a minimum reserve, and approve a budget modification for this fiscal year. And finally, we have recommended supportive edits of our municipal code, chapter six point two-four. So, a quick background, as Roger stated in his introduction, the current franchise agreement with Recology will soon expire, and council directed staff to negotiate a new tenure agreement with Recology. Also previously authorized is a bridge agreement that would continue current services with rate adjustments if council does not authorize a new franchise agreement this evening. This eighteen-month bridge agreement would allow time for a new could allow time for a new proposal process. Our main goals for this new agreement were for high levels of service and low rates for the area to continue, increase diversion from landfill, and prepare for compliance with the new state regulations that go into effect in about a year, the short-lived Climate Pollutants, Organic Waste, Methane Emissions Reductions Regulations, otherwise known as SB thirteen eighty-three. SB thirteen eighty-three requires extensive auditing and reporting to ensure that organics and edible food are diverted out of the landfill. Because this was a proposal process with only one provider, we needed to make sure we were getting a competitive deal, and for that, we hired HF and H consultants, who are very experienced in this area, and they performed a thorough review of costs, revenue requirements, and productivity, ultimately determining that the proposal was competitive. As we went into negotiations, we wanted to hear from the community about valued services and provide opportunities for feedback on this subject. To that end, we ran a statistical survey of residents, made the same survey available online in both English and Chinese, had a council study session in October, went before the Sustainability Commission and the Chamber of Commerce, and provided notices out to the community in various ways, including a dedicated webpage with FAQs and links. And Recology also sent out a notice about this meeting and the proposed rate changes. What we learned from the survey activities and feedback is that there is high satisfaction with Recology's services and that the current extra services beyond the three carts are valued, such as on-call collections, compost made available at the compost site, environmental days, and curbside collection of batteries, bulbs, and used oil. And just another note about Recology's notice, it did go out to over fourteen thousand customers, and we have received five emails in my division with questions and concerns. The scope of services in the new agreement includes a continuation of the existing services, namely, three-stream collection of garbage recyclables and organics, and extra services are described on and extra services, as described on the previous slide. Additionally, Recology is maintaining their agreement with green waste to process our recyclables and the agreements to take Cupertino's organics to South Valley and Blossom Valley for processing into compost. We are pleased about these continuing agreements because green waste is considered an excellent facility in the region and accepts a wider range of materials than many. And organics processors, the organics processors accept food waste as well as yard waste, which is required for SB thirteen eighty-three compliance. At this point, we wanted to make a special note about the destination facilities for Cupertino's recyclables and organics. We do have the ability, in the new agreement, to change to different facilities if we want. Meanwhile, the city has its own agreement for the disposal of the city's garbage, an agreement that will be ending in two thousand twenty-three. Meanwhile, we know that plastics are a topic of concern, and we can discuss the specific recyclability of various plastic types if desired at the end of this presentation. This new franchise agreement is primarily about the collection of the materials, and we can choose where they are taken and what kind of processing they undergo. While basic services will be remaining the same, there are a couple of new aspects. One is that Recology will be performing many of the obligations under SB thirteen eighty-three, and will need to hire additional staff to meet all the auditing, educating, and reporting requirements. Additionally, we found that forty-three percent of residents were interested in a smaller garbage cart, as were council members, and so a twenty-four-gallon option will be made available at two dollars per month less than the thirty-two-gallon service. Recology will also be making new online customer service features available in the coming years. Similar, in addition, also, the low-income rate that Recology has offered has been available to senior low-income residents, but will now be made available to all who qualify. Diversion of materials from landfill remains a shared goal of great importance, and we've built in several metrics to track our progress, which can be expanded upon if desired after this presentation. The new agreement includes many performance measures covering a range of operational aspects. To ensure that these measures are met, the agreement has a schedule of liquidated damage charges that are triggered if there are failures to perform in any area. This is not an exhaustive list here, but the liquidated damage schedule includes such activities as those noted here. We'll now move into talking about the rates, and at this point, I will be turning over the presentation to Rob Hilton, President of HF and H Consultants, and he'll just holler at me when to change slides.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. Good to be with you tonight. So, speaking to the rates portion of the contract, the role of the city is to regulate the maximum rates for each individual service level that Recology can charge. So important to understand that the city is not a rate setter, it is a rate regulator, and your interest is in regulating those maximum rates. Next slide. So, those proposed maximum rates that you see in the agenda package are competitive for the area. You remain in the in the low grouping for Santa Clara County. It includes those costs to comply with SB thirteen eighty-three. You'll notice, and we'll get into some detail on this later, that we're adding a charge for commercial recycling service. Today, commercial customers pay for garbage and organic service at the same price for the same service level between those two services, but recycling is provided at no additional charge. That will change, and there will start to be a small charge for recycling service. Recology has offered, as part of its proposal, to operate at a loss for the first three years of the agreement, and the proposed rates and percentages that are in front of you right now reflect a small loss in the first year and then coming into a ten-percent profitability target by year four. They're operating at a loss in part because of changes in the recycling market, some of which you have addressed through prior rate adjustments, but you sort of met the company halfway. They've had labor rate changes related to their own workforce, as well as sort of trickle-up factors related to minimum wage increases. And then probably the single largest factor is the reduction in commercial revenue that they've seen since the shelter-in-place orders as customers call up and cancel service or downsize service to accommodate what's going on in their environment. That has a revenue reduction effect to Recology, and that was significant in this process. So what's in front of you again is a rate schedule for year one and then the percentage adjustments that have been agreed upon for each of years two and year three. Next slide. After year two and year three, the contract includes two different mechanisms to adjust rates. So for years four and years eight, there is a cost-based rate adjustment process that will be done, where we go in and we look at what are Recology's actual costs of operations? What are their revenues? How do those compare to their proposal? So, for example, if Recology thought that it would take five routes to operate their residential garbage collection, and they come in in year four and it turns out that it took them seven routes, the additional two routes are on Recology. The ratepayers will not be at risk for those. But if they renegotiated their labor agreement and individual wage rates went up, if health benefit costs went up, things like that, that would be allowable. Similarly, you get an opportunity to look at revenues during those two cost-based reviews, and that year-four review will be significant. I think we're all hopeful that we will have recovered some from the shelter-in-place economic impact, and that businesses will be back to work, and that revenue will have been restored to Recology, and that may offset what you otherwise may see as adjustments. So aside from years four and eight, other years in the agreement will be based on an index. So we'll look at the Consumer Price Index, a Fuel Index, a Labor Index, and a Vehicle Maintenance Index, all of which are published by third-party government agencies. Recology doesn't have the ability to influence those numbers, nor does the city. And so they provide a fair, equitable sort of way of looking at how costs will adjust over the term of the agreement. In all of those years, there are maximums on the percentage adjustment. So in the index-based years, there's a five-percent overall cap on revenue, and in years four and eight, there's a five-percent overall cap on the contractor's expenses. So omitted from years four and eight would be changes in disposal costs or changes in city fees from that cap. So it's important to understand the caps are not the rate adjustments. It is usually the case that the percentage adjustments that come in from these index-based processes are well less than five percent. In fact, many that we're doing this year that use the same formula are coming in under three percent. Similarly, because of the ability to focus compensation adjustments on different sectors in order to manage rate relationships across sectors, it could be that one customer sector sees a small adjustment or no adjustment at all, and another sector sees an adjustment greater than five percent. So again, the cap is on the increase to the contractor, not the specific rate charge to each individual customer. Next slide. So this slide illustrates some samples from the most common residential and commercial rates that are out there. The thirty-two-gallon garbage cart rate is the most common one. About eighty percent of your residential customers use this rate currently, and you can see how that rate would progress for the first three years of the contract. Similarly, we've provided some examples of commercial and multifamily rates, again, using sort of a generic customer profile. In the commercial and multifamily sector, there's a lot more service levels. There's hundreds of service levels available to customers, and that's intended to allow businesses and multifamily properties to right-size the number of containers on their site, the frequency of that service, the size of those containers, and the type of those containers. But for transparency's sake, we wanted to show you what some of the most common customer classes would see in terms of their bill. One of the specific dynamics I wanted to highlight is for that recycling charge, you'll see that we're implementing the recycling charge for the first time in year one and that that amount is phasing up over the first couple of years and that the increase in the garbage rate and the organics rate for that first year is rather nominal because we're installing that recycling charge for the first time. Next slide. So this table shows the percentage adjustments for each of the first three years for each sector. So you can see for the resident, single-family residential sector, we're looking at just short of a ten-percent adjustment in each of the first three years of the agreement. For the commercial sector, there's a very small tenth of a percent adjustment in the first rate period, and that's because we're installing that multifamily and commercial recycling charge in that first year for the first time. That charge will be twenty-four percent of the equivalent garbage service level. So if you get garbage service in that bin at that frequency for a hundred dollars, you would be getting recycling service for twenty-four dollars. So it's a significant discount intended to continue to support and encourage that program. But the reality is the cost of processing recyclables and handling recyclables these days is at least as great as the cost of garbage, and so we need to start weaning off some of those incentive systems. You'll see then that the commercial recycling rate phases up from twenty-four to thirty-six to forty-eight percent in those first three years and would logically progress up into the future years, though we've only stipulated those first three. Next slide. So this slide demonstrates where Cupertino sits relative to your neighbors in terms of that most common residential rate. And it's important to understand you're low currently, and you would be low with these new rates adopted in February. There is some subsidy provided by the city from that Resource Recovery Enterprise Fund, and so that is holding the rates down a little bit, but you would still, even with the subsidy accounted for, be pretty advantaged compared to your neighbors. And it's also important to understand your neighbors, particularly the West Valley Cities, Campbell, Los Gatos, Saratoga, Montessorino, are renegotiating their franchise agreements right now as well. And as they implement these new regulations and new systems, are likely to catch up to some of the dynamics that you're seeing in renegotiating your agreement. Next slide shows the commercial rate comparisons, and it's a fairly similar story. You start as the cheapest rates in the area for that three-cubic yard one time a week, and even by installing that new recycling charge and making the adjustments that we're describing here, you remain in that lowest grouping, while a number of your neighbors, again, are renegotiating their agreements, and we'll see their numbers going up. So the next slide is the last on the cost-related issues, and we wanted to try and help you understand the relative impact of different issues that we're looking at. So SB thirteen eighty-three, the new services that we're requesting from Recology in order to support the city's compliance and generator's compliance with SB thirteen eighty-three is only about two-point-two percentage points of the overall increase to Recology. So it's not that we've added a lot of new services or a lot of new requirements on them that are inflating the cost of the program. Similarly, the addition of that twenty-four-gallon cart affords a lower entry rate for customers and only has about a two-tenths of a percentage point increase on the overall rates as you offer that lower initial rate. So again, that addition, that change to the system is not a significant contributor. And then Cupertino was on sort of the leading edge in terms of programming, and so there wasn't a lot of extra new programming that we were adding through this. And in fact, any new programs that we looked at had that negligible, if any, cost increase. So really, what we're looking at, while this is a significant adjustment over the first three years, it's really to deal with some of these other collateral factors, not really dealing with changes in services. So with that, I will turn it back over to Ursula to walk us through the remainder of the slides.
All right, thank you, Rob. So, you know, knowing that we would likely be looking at a rate increase of some sort under the new franchise agreement, we had questions in our survey on the subject. We presented reasons, like Rob was just talking about, why the rates might need to increase beyond our control. And so the the cost, as Rob said, the cost to provide the basic services has increased. There is the new set of regulations. There's the COVID situation, the recycling markets, none of which we can avoid addressing. The community had understanding about this, and over seventy-six percent of respondents were willing to accept a ten-percent increase if it meant keeping our current levels of service. Moving on to edits to the municipal code, we propose to clean up some language. Chapter six point two-four concerns the franchise and terms related to the solid waste collection. We worked with the City Attorney's Office to determine recommended changes, which include clarifying responsibility, aligning the code to the agreement, using terms consistently, and adding in a newly established threshold for AB eighteen twenty-six, which is the current compliance standard for mandatory commercial organics. Regarding sustainability, as garbage to landfill is a source of greenhouse gas emissions, especially organics, there is increasing overlap between sustainability concerns and waste reduction efforts. As such, there are several areas of the new franchise agreement that support our climate action plan and zero-waste policy goals, namely, prescribed diversion goals, compliance with SB thirteen eighty-three, and regular review of collection truck fuel technology. The current situation for EV trucks is that they do not really have the needed range and capacity, but Recology is tracking their evolution. And in fact, Recology is currently running a demonstration EV truck in Cupertino, which is a hundred-percent all-electric rear-end loader, which will be operating during December and January. Now fiscal impact, there are two fees that Recology pays to the city under the franchise agreement, the franchise fee and the solid waste fund operations fee. The franchise fee is set at twelve percent of gross receipts, which is estimated at about two million per year, and is received into the general fund, where it can offset the expense of pavement wear and tear from collection trucks. The solid waste fund operation fee will be based on estimated costs to administer the franchise agreement and run the Resource Recovery Program, which is about one-point-three-nine million in year one. Finally, we propose use of the Resource Recovery Enterprise Fund to smooth rates, as was previously discussed. The rates we showed you earlier include this proposed use, and it is in the intention of the city to continue strategic application of these funds for the benefit of ratepayers past the third year, but that determination will be based on analysis and future council direction. If this is approved, in order to begin making payments from the fund to Recology for smoothing in the current fiscal year, there is a budget modification request to increase appropriations in the Resource Recovery Enterprise Fund by two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-eight-hundred-sixty-four dollars. Additionally, we recommend establishing a minimum reserve for this fund of five-hundred-thousand dollars. That concludes the presentation, and we are open for questions.
Great, thank you very much, Ursula, Rob, as well as Director of Public Works, Lee. Do we have questions for staff and our guests? I'll take any hands raised. I see Councilmember Way, you have your hand raised first.
Yes, I have one question. On the year four and eight, the cost-based analysis, who is doing that?
The city would engage a third-party auditor to do that, typically somebody who has a CPA on staff, but also typically somebody who is experienced in the solid waste industry and understands those direct issues.
And that's not consultant, like you, your company, or?
It is certainly a service we provide.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So that's, you're at two-thirty. Councilmember Willie, you're next.
So just want to kind of touch on a few things that I think the community are interested in. Over the last twenty years, there've been a lot of improvements in terms of the garbage collection. I personally remember twenty years ago, we had a square orange bin for paper. We had a square blue bin for cans and glasses, and then we had the garbage bin with wheels. And so we had to carry those recyclables, square bins, out to the street. And the fact that now we don't have to separate the paper and the glass and cans, we put it all in the big blue, and it's got wheels, it pulls out to the street. So I say that in the sense of, are there any, are there any new thoughts going forward that there's going to be additional technological improvements somehow that we would be seeing just? We're talking about collection and landfill and recycling. I think it'd be good to at least be asking that question. What's out there on the horizon? Do we, do we see anything? That's the first question.
You want to take that, Ursula?
Sure, I can start off, and Rob can also answer. You know, I certainly keep an eye on, you know, just chatter about developing technology, how to best capture these materials and put them to good use. Certainly, an area of great activity. One example that springs to mind, and I know Green Waste was involved in this pilot effort, is there's a little startup that's trying to do chemical recycling of certain plastics. And so they were trying to assist in a pilot about that. So, you know, there are activities like that going on, and Rob probably could speak to more industry chatter.
Yeah, let me give you just a couple of quick ones. So the biggest movements in the industry right now are around processing technologies and looking at how do we use scanners and object recognition and AI and even robots in the sorting operation to more accurately and more effectively sort materials for customers? In the collection operation, there's a lot more deployment of onboard computers and cameras and systems that allow the companies to understand what customer behavior is and service level verification and things like that. And then obviously, the propulsion technology in the fleet is a big emerging issue, and we've reserved rights in your agreement around all of those things. And in fact, Recology brought some to us about what they were already in process evolving their system. So I think you guys have done a good job of building some flexibility in this to be able to adapt to that, despite it being a longer-term agreement.
Do you, do you foresee that that would cause any reductions in rates going forward? Or would it just keep them from going up? Or is it strictly more processing-related? No cost benefit for the consumers?
I think it's a lot of doing the job better and protecting the markets that we sell recyclable materials into so that those markets don't get worse. that we sell recyclable materials into so that those markets don't get worse.
Okay. And then the next question would be, you know, I, I think residents want to be sure we're doing our due diligence. And so Recology, I think, does a great job. I mean, I'm always really happy with how they, they're fast, efficient, no residue left on the streets. But what are the other providers that are out there? And to what degree do you check their rates with Recology and kind of make sure that we're on par with those other ones? Maybe if there was something really out of, out of place, it might make sense to change. But I think at this time, we don't have those, but we should be at least asking the question. And maybe you touched on it and I, I missed it, but I want to be sure we, we kind of at least ask that question.
Yeah, I'd be happy to respond to that. When we sit down in a sole-source negotiation environment like we did here, we establish a standard that the company needs to perform in their compensation proposal, at least as well as we would have seen in a competitive environment. And our only way to test that is to look at what other proposers in your marketplace propose in other competitive environments. So we do this enough to be able to do that. We get cost proposal information from Recology and its competitors through those competitive processes and other sole-source processes. We've handled a half dozen of them in the Santa Clara County area in the last few years. So we had a rich database to compare to. We also deal with Recology quite a bit in San Mateo County, so have benchmarks on their operations there. In benchmarking their operations, we generally found that whether it was productivity or corporate overhead or profitability or fuel cost per hour, vehicle maintenance cost per hour, that they were benchmarking at the average or better than their competitors, which indicates to me that yes, you could go out to a competitive RFP, but you wouldn't see significantly better pricing out there. There may be proposers that could beat them on, you know, one element of pricing or another, but beating them across the board would be very challenging.
I want you to know, Councilmember Willie, that you're, you're a few minutes over your.
Yep. Thank you. Yes. Great.
Okay, so Councilmember Moore, you have your hand up?
Okay, yes, I do. Thank you. So I'm, I want the public to, you know, make sure that they're aware that we have this new 24-gallon option. And very quickly, how many extra recycle and composting containers can a residential customer get? Because if you're trying to divert more of that waste, you're going to need more containers. And I, there was a mention about plastics, so I would like to know where plastics three through seven are going ultimately. And when I look at the flow chart regarding cardboard, if I'm seeing this diagram correctly, I'm looking at two question marks for where the cardboard is going. So I'd like to have that explained and, and bring up the fact that our service is lacking free compost nearly for six months out of the year, which our neighboring cities do have. And people are increasing their gardening, staying at home as a activity. So if there's something that we can do about that. So if someone could answer those questions, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. The, the cardboard, an alert resident also asked that question about the question marks. And though that part of the diagram is specific to compactors receiving clean cardboard from a commercial business, so a business that ends up with a lot of boxes that they're compacting and then moving off to a recycler. And I did get an answer from Recology earlier today that overall cardboard, he, John Zarelli, reported that, I think he said there was a 13% residual on that and it goes to, but most of the, I guess the important point is, sorry, get there. The important point is that all the residential and regular account commercial cardboard is going to green waste. And so that's where it's going. And then just this compactor, clean cardboard sometimes would go to another place. John didn't actually think we had any cardboard compactors in operation right now, but that's an available service. And he is on the line if we feel like we need more info on that. And then for extra carts, if you do have regular, if you regularly do have more yard waste than can be handled, then Recology can provide extra bins. They do want to, you know, they don't want to be dropping off and taking away carts that you need and don't need and whatever. But if you regularly have more than can fit, they're happy to provide extra, extra carts. I think I might have to turn to Rob or pull up the agreement, but I think it's two or three extra green carts could be made available.
Up to two green and up to two blue.
There we go. So yeah, if you really have that need, we do encourage people to sort correctly, of course. Just because you have a lot of, you know, space. That, well, that's what we worry about with the smaller carts is that if we squeeze that too much, we sometimes see contamination swoosh over on into the recycling. So just want to make sure everyone's sorting correctly before they make those decisions.
Okay. And the last part was regarding plastics three through seven. I don't know that there's a market for them, but what is happening to those plastics?
Yeah, there was kind of late-breaking news with that. So there's a Basel Convention piece that, that came into, that's going to go into effect in January. And as a result of that, we, you know, we talked, John, Recology talked to Green Waste more about it. And they're, they're projecting that markets are not going to be good in the new year for those mixed plastics. But the, the overall percentage of those plastics for green waste is only 2%. So it's only 2% of all the recyclables they get are these problem three-through-sevens. And then we looked at our own waste characterization and it's 1.25% of our overall recyclables. So we're discussing what to do with that. And the, the thought at the moment is to continue to accept them because if markets recover, maybe we, maybe there's more domestic development of markets or, you know, some of the problems are overcome in the, in the next year, then we continue, you know, then we have the opportunity to market them. If we try to stop accepting them, if we say, oh, now we don't want those, but then later there's markets and we want them again, that, that just confuses and, you know, it's, it's not great for messaging out to the residents and it's frustrating. So at the moment, the, the thought is that we'll continue to let, to accept those and see what markets there can be. But we're definitely keeping an eye on it as a, as an issue. And Rob can probably speak more to that and John if we want as well.
I just want to do a time check. We're about two minutes and 10 seconds over your allocated time. So you, you know, you're free to get the follow-up if you like, but it's just cutting into deliberation. So do you mind if we go on to Vice Mayor Chow at this point? Or would you like Rob to follow up on the, on the issue of plastics?
Do our answers count against you as well?
Yes. Yes.
Sorry. So try to be brief.
Indeed. Well, so Councilmember Moore, did you want to have a follow-up from Rob with regard to the plastics question?
I think this actually starts getting into our climate action plan that we're going to be looking at next year and diversion rates. So we'll, we'll get to it another time.
Okay, great. Counsel, Vice Mayor Chow.
Hey, hi. So thank you for the great service that you provide. I think we are getting a lot of positive feedback from our residents. However, we do need to examine the rate. So if we go for a 24-gallon trash cart, you mentioned there will be a 0.2% increase because you will need to get new carts. And then if people get $2 discount, I suppose you will lose some income also. Then would, in the end, the city has to subsidize these income loss because of moving to smaller carts?
So, so that is anticipated in the 0.2%. The 0.2% has nothing to do with the cost of Recology purchasing the containers. It's about the revenue reduction because customers will downsize their service and reduce their revenues to the company in response to having that available. So there is a small anticipated migration there that's causing that two-tenths of a percent.
But then would in a way be reducing the amount of garbage also, which should reduce cost? No?
Not really. The garbage just goes into a different container in those cases. You're hoping that the customer has more accurately separated their organics or their recyclables and you're still carrying the same weight to the facilities.
Okay, so with the smaller cart, we don't expect a small, less garbage produced?
Not materially, but there is a, there is a $2 discount there that does sort of reflect more than the savings in the, in the disposal.
Okay, so it's, so in the first three years, we are expecting about a 10% increase every year to accommodate the, the losses. So I think in the end, the end of the three years, about $30 a month for residential. And so that means with $40, you are breaking even. And then from then on, we will be increasing by either index or the cost-based. And the estimate is how many, how much, how many percent a year? No more than five, but in average in the past, how much it has to be?
Couple of different answers to that. So in terms of the history of the index-based adjustments, generally this index-based formula that's being applied to this contract where it's been used elsewhere over the last five years has come in at less than 3% mixed among the different indices. So we've got a 5% cap on there, but I think it would be pretty rare for you to approach or exceed that cap. In terms of, I'm trying to, I'm trying to respond to your 24-gallon cart question because the, the dynamics there are fairly complex and it's about what, how many customers would respond to that downsizing and what the impact to the company would be. So I'm trying to be careful with that. But in the first three years, you're correct, it is 9% per year. In terms of the profitability of the company, they would be losing about 2% in the first year. Then they would come into a profitable position in the second year. They'd be at about 5% by the third year and then about 10% profitability in the remaining years of the contract.
Wait, you mean the 24-gallon carts?
No, the profitability for the company in total. You asked a question about the company losing money and what the progression of that was.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so then what's, what's the incentive to move to 24-gallon if it doesn't really save us money?
It saves each individual ratepayer about $2 versus the 30-gallon rate. So the ratepayer would see a savings each month.
But it really doesn't save anything overall?
The overall cost of the system is about two-tenths of a percent higher. But for that, those individual ratepayers that can access that entry-level rate, they will save compared to the 30-gallon rate.
Doesn't make sense, but then they will see about $10 increase over three years.
Approximately.
Okay, so now you're about two minutes over.
Yeah.
So, okay, I don't have additional questions. Does anyone want to? Well, everyone's over except Councilmember Way. But Councilmember Way, if you don't have any further questions, I'll open it up to public comment at this point. I see three hands raised. The first is a caller with last four digits of phone number 8453, followed by Jennifer Griffin, followed by Stephen Scharf. Welcome, caller 8453. And you'll, you'll need to hit star six on your phone to unmute yourself. Okay, caller 8453, last call. You'll need to unmute yourself to be heard. That's a star six on your phone. Okay, we still can't hear you. You can keep your hand up if you like, but we're going to go on to Jennifer Griffin, followed by Stephen Scharf and Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. I grew up with Recology. It was called La Salta's Garbage back then. My family had no problem with it. They have deep roots in the area. And I'm very, very happy as an adult who have had Recology the entire time, except for a small amount of time I lived in an apartment in San Jose. But I think Recology has done a fantastic job, especially during COVID. I think they're very responsible. They're very, very, they respond to issues that the community raises. And I'm really, really happy to have this contract go forward because I feel like we're in good hands with them. Companies that have invested in the neighborhoods for as long as La Salta's Garbage Recology has, I mean, going on 70 years, you don't have track records like that in a lot of places. And I'm very, very happy to make my recommendations that their contracts be retained. And I hope we go forward with them for long periods of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is Stephen Scharf, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Gilbert Wong. Welcome, Stephen.
Hey. Hi, good evening. So I think that most residents would agree Recology's performed extremely well over the years. I'd love for them to continue serving our city. But there's a few things. The way the Resource Recovery Enterprise Fund is used to quote "smooth" rates, I think is misleading and it hides the true size of the rate increases going forward. And even with the use of that fund, we'd see a compounded nearly 32% increase in rates over the first three years with the 9.7, 9.6, and 9.6 increases. And I think while the 24-gallon carts are a nice idea, as Vice Mayor Chow points out, they really are misleading. It actually means that the customers with the larger carts of the 32-gallon are now going to be subsidizing the customers with the smaller carts since there's really no savings to Recology in terms of the smaller amounts of garbage. And finally, I think considering these very large proposed maximum rates, far, far in excess of the Consumer Price Index, it would be prudent for the city to put the garbage and recycling contract out to the competitive bidding process. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Our next speaker is Peggy Griffin, followed by Gilbert Wong. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor Paul, council members and staff. I want to thank Ursula Sorova for answering my detailed questions. I want to say that Recology has provided excellent service over the years. But as a resident, I'm very concerned about the increases over the next 10 years. I want to go through my questions and then with the rest of my time, maybe get answers. Question one is, the city guaranteeing Recology a 10% profit every year? Salaries, if you're lucky to have one, don't have this guarantee. Question two is, is the city guaranteeing will cover their costs? What incentives are there for them to reduce their costs if we're going to cover them? The loss of landfill disposal of garbage will be moved from a city cost to a Recology cost. Doesn't that mean this cost moves to the customers? Doesn't this add to the increase of our rates? And lastly, please discuss how the fund to smooth our rates would be used in years one, two, three, and four. The numbers are presented, but it doesn't say whether or not it includes this, this extra money. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. You do have another 90 seconds, which I'll seat over to staff to answer your questions if the city man, the city clerk would keep those questions up. So can anyone address the, the speaker's questions?
Yeah, this is Rob. I can respond. The city is not guaranteeing Recology a profit. The company needs to operate responsibly and manage its expenses and revenues in order to meet that profit target. That sort of ties to the second question, which is we are not guaranteeing that we'll cover their costs, whatever they are. What we're assuring them is the costs associated with their original proposal to us would be allowable costs during those rate reviews. But again, if they required more resources, if they blew their bid and didn't allocate enough resources to the contract, that would be a cost to recology and would be a reduction to their profitability. And the shifting of the responsibility for paying the disposal bill actually doesn't have any impact on customer rates. The city had collected money through recology, put it into a fund, and then paid the landfill historically. And all we're doing is cutting out the middleman and sort of cutting down the check writing that goes on. But ultimately, the rate payers are still funding the disposal bill in both the prior and the go forward scenarios.
Okay.
And then discuss how the fund would be used to smooth the rates in years one, two, three, and four. And I think the specific dollar amounts are provided in the staff report for what the offset is in each of those three years.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Our next speaker, our next speaker is Gilbert Wong, and we'll go back to caller 8453 after that. Welcome, Gilbert.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, the City Council and City Manager Dev Feng. Gilbert Wong, former mayor and representing myself. I want to enthusiastically, enthusiastically support staff's recommendation to renew recology's contract for another 10 years. I definitely agree with Jennifer Griffin that recology has provided excellent service to the city of Cupertino. Any concerns regarding unsatisfied service? Recology is very good in answering back. I do want to respectfully answer back Mayor Scharf's concerns that, that if you look at rates compared with the other cities that staff provided, Cupertino has been provided excellent low rates compared to other West Valley cities. Second, we're trying to encourage residents of Cupertino to recycle more and not to throw away their garbage and to recycle more. If we don't incentivize our residents to recycle more by encouraging them to take a smaller bin, which is an excellent idea, they choose to pay a lower price per month. And that's how we reduce our fees and also reduce garbage. And that is the goal of what Cupertino policy has been passed when I was on the City Council, and I believe that is still the current policy. Also, recology has been helping see Cupertino implement 1383, and that is a huge plus as we're a contact city where we have very small team of folks and they work really hard in our city staff. And we rely on recology to help reduce our waste. And if folks decided to use the current can, the price increase is not that much. Again, recology has been excellent supporter in the community, especially supporting our diversity, equity, and inclusion by volunteering free garbage service for our festivals like Detroit Blossom Festivals. We really appreciate it, and I encourage the City Council to support the recognition tonight. Thank you very much. I mean, this morning. I know that Mayor Darcy Paul is running an excellent meeting and tried to end before midnight, but he is trying his best, and I really excited to have Mayor Paul as our mayor this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Gilbert. That point was not lost on me with regard to your commenting on, on good morning at the beginning. But let's go back to caller 8453. I'll attempt to unmute you. You'll need to unmute yourself as well by pressing asterisk six. I'm not seeing a response there. And so.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. We can hear you.
Yeah, thank you for taking my call. So I am a resident of Cupertino for last 19 years. So when I came to this city, so I had the same three containers. I used to pay $19 per month. So now it is already more than twice. And now I see the rates going up 10% compounded every year. So, and, so, and also there is a, I think from the survey, I think the president said for most of the, because in the, most of the residents want a lesser, smaller size. So instead of providing a 24 gallon container, especially for the yard waste and recyclable, so we should consider picking up every alternate week. You can pick up the, the weight every week, but the other two cases, so the yard waste and the recyclable can be picked up alternate weeks. See, have some example like that, right? Street cleaning happens every first, first and third Wednesday. So that is already we have an example like that. So by this way, probably you can give a better, you know, residents also get the service what they desire because it is already telling that they really don't need the size we have, that we are constructing a 24 gallon, which is a no-no because it's ultimately increases the rate. I think the vice mayor was it was due diligence, so it is sort of misleading and fooling the public. That's not good. So 24 gallons probably appear you not to consider at all, but keep the 32 gallons. The amount of trash we generate may remain same and may go down because the family size, typical family size, that the two people or four people, so the trash amount not going to go down, but we are not generating, we are more educated, we try to handle better. So the, I think the service can be, you know, it's not going to cause problem by changing every alternate week, especially for the yard waste and also for the recycle, but wet trash can be picked up every week. That way you can, you know, contain the cost for recycling for the recology, and also we can please the users, that is our residents, and we can control the cost for the residents. We don't have to pay, rather you sort of asking for the increase. So you can say that you can decrease the cost and contain our costs for the, for the, you know, residents for next 10 years. So I'll be happy. Say I also, you know, surveyed in my own, my own street, I asked, you know, my about 15 residents, I know because we are a very close community here. I asked how much you generate, what happens if they pick up. So they're happy, you know, the rate is decreased. So they're happy, you know, they don't need every, because I have, I have seen that why they're picking up every week. Now I'm just taking the empty cash almost all, you know, there's an awful every week there and putting there. So there's no need for me to have, or I think I come, you know, I checked with my people. So please do not approve the increase. Please do not approve the increase. And reduce the survey. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, so we are concluded with the public comments on this item. I'll bring it back to council. I will say that, yes, I did make a commitment to try my best to conclude these meetings by midnight. We're, we're a bit over right now. What will be my standard practice going forward is to entertain a motion to, to adjourn the meeting once it's at midnight. But I'll check in every half hour when I can at a natural breaking point to see if council would like to extend for another half hour the, the time. Is that something that would be amenable to people since we're pretty close apparently to the end of the agenda? Council member Moore.
Yes, that sounds acceptable. I was actually going to make a motion. I thought we were moved on to that. But I, I appreciate your first request and let me know when you're ready to have a motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll go through and ask Vice Mayor Chow, are you okay with extending half an hour? You'll need to unmute yourself.
Let's get it done.
Okay, council member Willie?
Yes.
And council member Way?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. So council member Moore, you had your hand raised and expressed an interest in making a motion. Would you like to bring that motion at this time?
Yes, Mayor Paul. Very briefly, I move that we adopt resolution number 20-142 and conduct the first reading of ordinance number 20-2218, an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Cupertino, amending Cupertino Municipal Code Chapter 6.24, Garbage, Nonorganic Recycling and Organic Waste Recycling Collection and Disposal.
Okay, very good.
Request, Mr. Mayor, and that council member Moore just include in her motion that the clerk read the title of the ordinance by title only, and the city clerk's reading would constitute the first reading thereof.
Yes, I was just about to ask that of council member Moore. Would you be willing to append that language to your motion to make it an omnibus motion?
Please add what our city clerk has amended. Thank you.
Very good. Is there a second to council member Moore's motion?
I'll second that.
A council member Way, seconds. All right, who would like to go first? I see Vice Mayor Chow's hand is raised. Vice Mayor Chow, you cut into your deliberation by a couple of minutes, so you'll have three minutes to deliberate.
So I think the residents who spoke last made sense. I don't see why we need a 24 gallon garbage cart. Rather, can we do choose a pickup that's every other month, every other week without lower the cost?
Okay, so you have an initial question. I'm not sure to whom this is best directed. We have, Rob is raising his hand. Rob?
In terms of the every other week collection idea, that is problematic because of Title 14 of the State Health and Safety Code requiring collection every seven days of any putrescible material, which would be any food scraps, which would be present in potentially both the black container, the garbage container, and the green container. So without having two different materials to alternate weeks with, you have the same number of trucks, pretty much the same number of employees. There's not much of a savings unless you can do that every other week in an alternating manner. So it's, it's not as practical as a cost-saving approach.
So then in case we do 24 gallon trash cart, where the old 32 gallon carts would go? Would they go to the dump?
Did be recycled or reintroduced into inventory if they were still in good shape?
Um, okay. Yeah, I don't see why we should add this additional you add administration, you add extra cost that we really don't get anything.
Well, in, in our survey, the, the residents did have preference to a 24 gallon container. And in the study session that we had with council, it was desired to have the container as an option. And that's why it's here this evening.
They didn't know there is no real cost saving, right? And the survey also says that less than 50% of people are happy with just $6 increase, and we are looking at $10 increase. So I think the survey, we are not really giving them a lot of information when we ask the questions, maybe.
Yeah. Well, and it's strictly voluntary for people to select that, that choice. So Vice Mayor Chow, you still about half a minute?
Okay.
Okay.
And we'll think about that, yeah.
Very good. Council member Willie, you have your hand raised next. You have.
Yeah, should be fair, should be fairly quick on the same line. So there's the garbage bin, there's the recycle green, green bin, but there's also the yard waste. And the yard waste, mine gets used maybe once a month, if that. You need a different truck for each of those three. If the yard waste truck was only needed once a month rather than every week. I'm out there when I go to work, watching the yard waste truck come down the street, you know, following the garbage in the recycle. And if one third of those trucks are only needed once a month or even twice a month, that would sure seem to be, you know, a 10%, 15% savings. If there is a particular individual that did need yard waste more often, then make that a surcharge for that individual. And so I, I would also think that that should be looked at for a way to reduce. Because right now you're burning that fuel with yard waste and, and it's just running around. That's my only comment. And then I think I support.
Thank you, council member Willie. You do still have 45 seconds by my keeping of time. And council member Moore, you have your hand raised next.
I just want to address some of the comments. I think the 24 gallon container encourages homeowners to get an extra compost bin, get an extra recycle bin, and divert as much as they possibly can as a gardener. And I, I do my own yard work. I, I personally need the compost bin and I, I I should be encouraged to use that bin for kitchen scraps and kitchen waste as much as possible. So I, I would not want to have a penalization on that. And I think that when people are growing locally and growing their own food, that they're doing a good thing. And I would not want to do anything that would discourage that. So I have a different opinion about those items.
Okay, thank you, council member Moore. You have two minutes left by my count. Council, Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is up next, but I'm going to give council member Way an opportunity to speak as she hasn't spoken yet during deliberation. Council member Way?
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I am very supportive of this contract for a couple reasons. I really like what Jennifer Griffin says. You know, it's really wonderful to have a company that's been 70 years in our locally and so engaged in community. And I do believe with rates, we are very comfortable with, we have a consultant that really look into other rates. And I do believe this is a great opportunity to establish even more relationship with recology. And I want to agree with Kitty because it, lots of people compost and a lot of people have yard work and lots of people need every week pickup. And it is impractical for recology to say, we're going to skip this address and go to that address. So I think we are looking at our whole city. We get two free blue, two free brown if you have more compost and more disposable, and you can choose to have a little more, less of your garbage to encourage you to recycle more. So we're looking at the whole city, not individual savings. And I do believe Cupertino is an environmentally friendly city, and we need to move toward, you know, more compost and zero landfill. So I think let's look at this as a citywide engagement instead of just how do we save individually? And I think a lot of things are not practical to skip this house, that house, and then do every other week. And I, I'm very comfortable with the contract.
Okay, thank you, council member Way. You have approximately three and a half minutes, a little bit more. Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand up.
So I'd like to echo what John said. It's not individual. I think what he said makes, makes sense. So we can have one week that's garbage and recycle. Next week, garbage and yard waste. And the people who need more, they can request more bins, right? You can have two recycle bins, you can have two or three yard waste bins. But then it's picked up every other week. Then the truck doesn't have to run every week. There's a recycle bin truck comes every other week. The, the yard waster comes every other week, but the garbage comes every week. So that satisfies the health code. Would that save the overall cost for the city?
Okay, I, I have you at about your limit. But would anyone like to respond to that? I, I see.
Yeah, let me just clarify. It would not be legal to collect the yard trimmings every other week because your community places food scraps into the yard trimmings container. So that container by state law has to get collected every week. The garbage container has to get collected every other week or every week by state law. So the only one that you'd have an option on would be the recycled container. And again, if you only have one material that you do every other week, there's no savings because they still have to have the same number of trucks, same number of drivers, all of that. It's a very marginal proposition at that point. So because state law requires the green and the black to go to the landfill or to get processed every week, you don't really have this option that you guys are talking about.
Council member Way, you have your hand up?
No, I just didn't put it down.
Oh, you didn't put your hand down? Okay. All right, so we've, we've done a couple of rounds of deliberation. I see council member Moore has her hand up. Council member Moore.
Just really briefly, I also support the contract, but with regards to recyclables, with, with COVID, we are ordering a lot more through Amazon and ending up with a lot more recycle waste product that needs to be taken care of. So, you know, for me, that's just impractical to go for once every other week. I'm actually trying to look and into getting the two or three extra bins. So I'm glad that they're, they are. So I'm glad that they're, they are offering this and, and helping with the compost. And, and I, I know I mentioned getting compost year, uh, year round and hopefully some time that can happen for us as well. But I am in support of this, um, contract.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Um, so I, I do see remaining time, uh, overall distributed throughout. I haven't made my comments yet. Um, I, I am generally in support of the motion on the table. Uh, what gives me the most pause is the fact that we're committing our community to a tenure contract. Um, and we, we don't really have a comprehensive financial sense of, uh, the entirety of, uh, of the South Bay, uh, ecosystem for the service. Uh, however, after conducting the diligence, speaking with uh, our consultant, our staff, our public works director, um, I do feel confident that uh, we are getting a, a reasonably good deal from a provider that, um, that, that has earned the trust of the community. Um, in the future, and I, I think we're probably speaking a decade into the future at this point, but um, early preparation would probably not be a bad idea, given, um, our, our past uh, experiences the last several years. Um, perhaps some efforts could be made since we do have, um, likely staff, um, uh, retention and carryover to that point. Uh, as to what the market looks like more comprehensively throughout the, uh, South Bay. I don't really know how to, how to achieve that though, without going out to a bid. But again, with regard to, um, you know, the diligence that, that I've done and, and heard, uh, performed, I, I, I feel confident that this is, um, this is a good deal for our community. And on the balance of things, I, I completely respect where people are coming from with regard to the concerns over the rates. Um, but I, I think on the balance of things that this is a reasonable, uh, and, and good motion to support. And I will be doing so. Um, there's a few minutes left over. Um, Hang has about the same amount of time that I do. Uh, i- if anyone has any final comments, um, prior to, uh, bringing the motion to four to vote on, um, please, uh, feel free to raise your hand at this point. Um, and I see Councilmember Willie does have his hand raised. Uh, and before, um, I recognize Councilmember Willie, uh, I'll point out that our city clerk still needs to conduct the first reading as well. So, um, Councilmember Willie?
Yeah, just a quick one. You know, the, uh, Rob has done such a detailed analysis and staff has, has contributed. Thank you very much. I mean, it makes it a whole lot easier for us to ultimately commit our community when we do have this much detail. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Uh, any other final comments from council? Prior to bringing it back to our city clerk? Okay, seeing no hands raised, uh, I will ask, uh, Madam City Clerk to please conduct the first reading of ordinance number two zero dash two two one eight.
This is the first reading of ordinance number two zero dash two two one eight and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino amending Cupertino Municipal Code Chapter six point two four, garbage, non-organic recycling and organic waste recycling collections.
And Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote of the motion on the table?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Uh, very good. Thank you very much. We are now at council and staff comments and future agenda items. Um, uh, our, our city manager, uh, Madam City Manager, do you have any, uh, staff comments that you would like to provide to us at this time?
I do, just a couple of quick ones. Excuse me. Um, the city of Cupertino has a new timeline for community funding grant opportunities. So I thought I, it would be best if I announced it here. Uh, this year, the program will be facilitated through an online portal where each organization can create a profile, submit their application and track their application process. The portal will be available beginning January first, twenty twenty-one, and of course, we'll send out other notifications. Um, through the community funding grant program, the city Cupertino provides funding to local nonprofit organizations in the areas of social services, fine arts and other programs for the, for the Cupertino community. Uh, for more information, visit the Cupertino.org forward slash community funding or email communityfunding@cupidino.org. That's the first one. And the second one, which I arguably should have done first, uh, is our I Love Cupertino Community e-gift card program that we just created and will be live later this week. Basically, it is, um, an e-card program, uh, available just before the holidays. Thinking of Christmas gifts and other holiday presents to keep shopping local. Um, so it's an opportunity for residents and local shoppers to enjoy local restaurants, shops and entertainment in Cupertino while supporting local businesses. That'll come out also in the items of interest. So just thought everybody should know that. In considering stocking stuffers and other things that might keep things festive this weekend for everybody. Thank you.
And where would, uh, members of the community go to purchase this e-gift card?
We haven't announced it yet, so it'll come out first in the items of interest. We'll push it out on the website. We'll make sure it gets um, all the news and I'll make sure that it's in my, uh, Friday update to council.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Deb. Um, would anyone from council, uh, care to share uh, their comments or requests for future agenda items? I see Councilmember Willie has his hand raised. Councilmember Willie?
Yeah, so, uh, early on this evening, when the residents were still in attendance, and I talked about the, uh, resident concern about the five G cells. And so now that we're here and I can say maybe a few more words, um, I'd like to start with what I brought up once before. I mean, real- realize how, how many residents are concerned about this. They come to the city council meeting and they speak, and that's the end of it. If they were to then follow up and say, hey, I brought this up at the city council meeting, uh, what if anything has been done? There's essentially no record other than the recording. I presented to the city manager a while back, a, a customer concern form that I would suggest something like it to be used. Where when a resident makes a, uh, five G cell concern, it gets recorded in on this form, who the resident is, where's the cell of interest, a aerial map so that anyone who were to pull up this form can see, oh, it's on Deansa Boulevard. Well, you know, residential street and how close the houses are to it. What's other locations have been considered or haven't been considered? So that it, it's given a number so that any point in time that resident and his neighbors and other residents could look and see, by the way, whatever happened to that? Did it go anyplace? Without that, the residents are just left coming to us over and over again without a real understanding. And then to add to that, in today's discussion, they raised several questions that I think staff should look into, that, uh, the other communities maybe are not being hit as hard by Verizon as Cupertino. Is that or is that not true? How many, uh, s- five G cells, uh, did Sunnyvale have, you know, six months ago versus now? The next question, the hundred feet to schools, if that truly is, uh, 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 allowed by the FCC law and stuff, why is it not allowed for residential houses that are even twenty feet? And, uh, then there was the, uh, third, uh, question about trying to convince Verizon and the other cell providers to truly focus on the commercial locations first. Let the community get more comfortable with what are the health aspects. And it may take six months or it may take a year, but we don't want to, you know, hinder Verizon and, and the other providers. So let them go ahead and look at how much of the city is truly not of a serious concern to the residents. And so I'd really like to put that out there. I'm not asking for an agenda item. I'm asking for direction to staff.
Okay, Councilmember Willie, uh, that's approximately three minutes. Uh, I was, I was timing that. Um, I, so you're not asking for an agenda item, you're asking for direction to staff. Um, I, I'd like to get staff input as to whether what you're describing would require an agenda item and what the nature of that agenda item might be.
We can actually address each and every one of those concerns that I've already recorded. The one I would say about, you know, in commercial zones, uh, that is required uh, in the preference system, if you look into the guidelines, it says commercial zones first. Um, but we can answer those questions and perhaps get them back to council.
Okay, uh, very good. Um, so, uh, are, are you suggesting a, a study session or a line of communication?
I'll just do a line of communication first. Um, and I believe, Mayor, you said that you would work it with city staff and I or whatever, but I'll, I'll pull something together and see if it meets the mark.
Can you send out these, the, uh, uh, form that I generated, my own form on cell location resident so that the other council can also see what a form might look like?
Yeah, I, I try, well, I can certainly do that, John. I don't know if I have a copy of that.
I'll, I'll re-send it to you.
Okay. Happy to do that.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Councilmember Willie. We have Councilmember Way?
Um, first, I would like to thank you, uh, Mayor Paul, for really nice, my first meeting. And I, I was a little nervous to come into this, but I think, um, you did a great job and I'd like to thank my council, fellow council members and make us feel really comfortable and the staff. So this is my first council meeting and I feel really comfortable and I will become better. The second is, I actually would like to request a study session on the five G cells. Cause I wasn't in the study session, you know, where I'm, I'm new to this. And I received so many comments and by emails and by, uh, public comments. And I would like to learn more. So I really would like to either request this to be a study session so that we can be informed, I can be informed and, um, go from there. So I don't know if this is a good place to request it. Is whether it be a genitized, make agenda, on the agenda or, um, just a study session?
May I provide comment? So we've had two or three study sessions on this topic that we've posted to the small cell and cell tower website that also has our location map. It has the guidelines posted. And we provided that in the items of interest and sent it out to public for the public consumption as we had promised to the city council prior. Uh, so we have done that. I'm hoping that I can send you the link so you can look at those study sessions first. It's the same material. Um, and what we'll do is allow me to answer these particular questions first and get it to the city council. And then we'll go from there. Study sessions, study sessions take a lot of labor, so.
Okay, that'll be great. Okay. So one of this, um, answers, um, one of the questions that John asked, I don't know if, um, it's specifically asked is why, um, you know, about a hundred feet for schools and for playground and versus, uh, residents? So I think that question is, is a legitimate question and I'm hoping that that would for sure be included.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Way. Our, uh, next hand up is Councilmember, uh, I think Councilmember Moore had her hand up first for some reason, but I, I'm seeing Councilmember Chow on the list higher. Um, I, I'm going to call on Councilmember Moore because I, I thought your hand went up first. Um, so Councilmember Moore?
Uh, well, that, that order is not so imperative for me. Uh, I want to reiterate something that, uh, you actually had suggested, Mayor Paul, and that was, uh, something about the lobbying ordinance. Um, I had written city council back in, in twenty nineteen and I still would like to see that, uh, happen. Um, and with regards to our, uh, BMR manual, I don't know if there's some way that we could make, uh, the requirements, the dispersal requirements and the same number of bedrooms and unit sizes of the BMRs versus the market units, if there's some way that we can, um, make that so that can't be bypassed. Um, and I'm particularly concerned about the number of bedrooms issue because it feels as though we're being discriminatory against, uh, low-income families with, with two kids, for instance. Um, if you, you could actually ca- call a concession and say, I'm only going to provide studios in a project, the way, the way these, the density bonus law is working. So I, I'm wondering if someone can research this, if there's a way that we can ensure that low-income families are taken care of. Um, we're looking at the general plan amendment process and I wish to have the, uh, community benefits put back into the discussion. Um, because we see many times these community benefits end up being a cash amount, uh, for various agencies. And it's irrelevant to what the project is itself is actually doing to the community. So you could have a, a very large project which the community might not want, but it has this cash amount which, um, for a certain agency which needs the money. So I, I would like to have some discussion around community benefits. And, uh, I really liked the suggestion to do accommodation on our library. I thought that was, uh, really thoughtful. And if we could, uh, you know, keep that in mind. And I too have had discussions about the cell towers. Um, the twenty feet versus a hundred feet, um, question has, uh, really stuck in my mind. And that we have guidelines versus an ordinance, whereas some other communities have ordinance, have an ordinance on this. Um, I, I have wondered if there's some way we could have a little more teeth, uh, in what we're requiring and to go for an ordinance instead. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Um, so our, our next, uh, hand up is Vice Mayor Chow?
Yeah. So along the same line Kitty just mentioned regarding small cell, I think I have requested an agenda item. I don't think a line of communication is sufficient because the residents do want to look, us to look into revising the, the, the. Right now, we don't even have an ordinance. We have a staff authored regulation, which the council did not approve. We just were informed that this regulation exist, uh, was published. So we, I think we, we deserve.
Absolutely not.
An ordinance that the council approved. And then we should revisit the twenty feet, a hundred feet. And also I would like to see how we can prioritize and proactively identify sites that's in commercial and maybe in the middle of parks. That are better alternatives. Okay, so I think we, I would like this to be an agenda item. I think Kitty seconded me, uh, earlier, so.
Okay, um, so, uh, do you have anything else, Vice Mayor Chow, before?
And I think we need an item, um, uh, update on Lehigh. That's actually one, uh, I think it's a one work program item. We actually have budget for, uh, for attorney to really look into this issue and this. I think it, it has come into a critical point now. We really need to have an update on the current status. And then another thing is, uh, I would like to request that library commission be allowed to be more in- involved in the fundraising, um, uh, strategies and design of the plaques in the library expansion project. I think that's part of their role according to the municipal code. And that the architecture design actually is part of the library commission's, uh, role. Um, and then.
Actually, the, um, may I make comment?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I don't see anything wrong with the commission being involved in the fundraising and the design efforts of the, uh, whatever they're, they're fundraising for. But the design build contract is city staff's work. And any changes would require a cost or schedule increase. And so if we separate the duties that way, it'll go very smoothly.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And then also, uh, the League of Cities, uh, is, we pay annual due to League of Cities. But this year, League of Cities has not represented the, um, us in some of the lobbying effort and actually worked against us. So I, I wonder if we can write a letter to them and kind of put it on record that we would like them to, um, assert local control, which is their mission. And the two thousand eighteen resolution that the majority of cities actually approved. Um, so I don't know, do we need a agenda item for this? Or, or maybe the city manager can just draft a letter?
I think for something like that, we would.
January.
To bring it to the council to discuss and, uh, make an approval for.
Um, I think it's still in January, so we need, uh, to schedule in January.
The dues are due in January?
Um, yeah.
Okay, well, th- that, that might be a bit of a timeliness issue, but, um, Okay, well, th- that, that might be a bit of a timeliness issue, but, um, we'll see what we can do. Uh, so, so that's your time. Um, I would like to go to, uh, I, I, I saw a, a few buckets on oral communications. Uh, I, I agree that we can issue a commendation or a proclamation to the library. With regard to, uh, the, the concerns about small cell, I'll coordinate with, uh, the city manager and see what makes sense, given the totality of the sentiment expressed here. Uh, also notice, uh, note that, um, a resident had a few agenda requests, uh, regarding, uh, new housing bills, um, R1 improvements relating to, I think it was privacy planning guidelines. I, I didn't quite catch the other one, as well as Parkland distribution. I, I think, I think those are, those are all legitimate to consider, but I mean, we should probably look in alignment with what the current, um, work plan looks like. And, uh, hopefully we get responses to people that come out. I mean, uh, council member Willie has, um, has expressed that appetite to, you know, at least give them an acknowledgement that, uh, their concerns were heard. It doesn't need to be a substantive response on a point by point basis, but, uh, just, you know, a framework for, uh, what's out there, you know, the follow-up and, and so forth, uh, which is essentially, I think, the information that is conveyed over the course of the meeting. But, you know, um, it reaches out to, uh, people who may not be up at 12:45 in the morning.
Can I make one comment about that? I will send them a note. There's a, um, a, um, an independent, somewhat independent discussion that they've all, all acknowledged on email tomorrow night at six regarding 5G, uh, that they should probably, I would encourage them to attend. They have information on it and the only person that I saw, didn't see on the email chain that I will forward it to so that he might be aware of it is Mr. Chu, who was on making comment today.
Okay.
Um, so I'll forward that to him. The second thing is, I believe we need to remind, I was gonna remind you or you requested I remind you of, um, a placeholder following oral communications that would, um, be able to follow up with, um, public comment a little earlier in the meeting than at this point in time in the meeting?
Right, I was going to follow up with you and the city attorney with regard to whether we could.
Okay, we can talk about that, yeah.
Future agenda. Um, and then for council member Moore's, uh, comments, a lobbying ordinance, I think people know that, um, that, that I do want to push that forward.
It's on the list, yep.
Uh, and, and we'll take a look at what the timing might be able to look like in terms of, um, the, the rest of our work plan. BMR manual requirements, um, I, I heard can we implement them in the general plan? Uh, as, as a possible avenue, but, um, I, I think that's an ongoing process. We can, uh, take a look at as part of our, our work plan items, but, uh, that, that's an interesting idea. Uh, the community benefits, I, I know that the gatekeeper, um, the, the mechanism has been kind of questioned from the outset.
Actually, it's coming back to council relatively soon, if I remember.
So there's never unanimity and, and thank you for, for that update. And I, I think that, that pretty much does it. Uh, Vice Mayor Chow asked for an update on Lehigh.
That I believe is already agendized for.
February, maybe?
It's either the January meeting or the first meeting in February.
No, it's, uh, January 19th.
Oh, yeah, thanks, Roger.
It'll come back at our, our, our next regularly scheduled council meeting. And I think that'll do it with regard to the last, um, request about the League of Cities and annual dues. I think this is going to be a timing issue. Um, I'll, I'll speak to our city manager about it to see what, uh, might be able to be done. But, um, you know, it, it's, it's a, it's a letter that could be written, um, in the future as well. Uh, i- if, if our council so chose to, um, to do so, so.
Yes, my only comment to that one would be that city staff also benefits from being members of the Le- League of California Cities with regards to.
Of course.
Training and access and stuff.
Right.
So if there's, if there's some thought to not paying our dues or something.
Well, I think.
It's not about accompanying the, the dues, um, to, to, you know, express some sentiments with regard to representation and such.
I would want a draft from a member of council or something.
Right. So, um, you know, with that, I would like to wish everyone a, uh, very good end of the year. Um, happy holidays to, uh, whichever ones you, you celebrate. And, uh, remind people that our January 5th council meeting, uh, has been canceled. And so I will adjourn, uh, this meeting until January 19th. Uh, thank you very much and good night.
Good night.